Then call the meeting to order.
All right, let's call the meeting to order. Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its right. All right, first, I think we're going to start off with Eric. Roll call, we're going to start off with roll call, please.
Bush.
Here.
Chambers.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Eisner.
Here.
Lindsay.
Oh, he was here.
Here.
Douglas.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here. Okay, I think to get the the update from Kramer Brothers, I'd like to jump that ahead. Eric Porz, are you with us?
I am here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great.
All right.
Sorry, say that again?
Port is yours.
All right, great. So I'm just giving you guys a little update of what we've been doing in the month of July and what we're going to finish up here and start in the next month. So for July, we're we're going to finish our exterior foundation walls. So in the next week, week and a half, we're we're going to be completing those. We're going to continue our masonry CMU block walls along the existing school. And then we are going to finish our work inside the existing school. That includes the boiler, new boiler room and the old boiler room. Moving into August, we're going to start the erection of the precast wall panels at the exterior of the building. We're going to also start the structural steel on the interior of the building. That'd be a loft area. And then we're also going to be starting the setting of the precast plank. So that'll be the the new north entry and then moving into the library loft area. And then we'll also be continuing our block masonry and that'll be at the south south wall of the gym. So right now, we're right on schedule and everything's moving ahead as it should.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, next, we're going to jump into board communications received.
We've all received a lot of emails. I just thank everyone for the either phone calls or text messages or emails that we've all received. I think it says a lot about the community as a whole as to whatever model you want to go with or not. I think there's a lot, there's a lot of interest in this and I just appreciate all the the input that I've had received.
I would echo that as well and I'm sure some of those comments will come up as we move throughout the meeting. And I, again, I'd like to thank everybody in the community who's engaged in this conversation and to those of you who who had emailed me or emailed the board as a whole, if you did not receive a response from me directly, please know that I have read your email and took it into consideration, but did was not able to keep up with the responses to everyone as a result of the the number of emails that came in. But please know that your voice is heard.
Certainly here too. Received many emails, more phone calls this time than usual. And an email that went to the board regarding my communication technique, I guess, with the board during a meeting. I did receive it. There was some demands in there. I will, I will not be oh, complying with any of the demands in the email. And if you want to have a further discussion, the person that wrote the email, certainly my contact information is available. I'd certainly love to talk to you in person. And I appreciate the responses too. That's all I can say. Yeah, I mean, we've all received a lot of them. The engagement's awesome. Regardless of where you stand, it's it's great that we have an engaged community. Eighty percent, you know, feedback on the survey blew my mind. It's awesome that it matters to so many people and I think that the one thing I've taken away so far from this is regardless of where people at, they believe we're doing a really good job in the classroom. And I think that's nice to hear from time to time that 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 our parents and our community, you know, supports supports the job that they're doing and that's just kind of a secondary takeaway I got from from all the communication is fully count, you know, regardless of where these people are at, they all want their kids in the classroom, you know, at some point because of of the staff they're they're in there with and the job that we're doing here. So kudos to the staff and the admin. Once again, because that's that to me was a secondary piece of that survey that that people are happy with 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 those two persons.
Doctors? Doctor Dunn?
Yeah, just want to echo everyone's comments. I received a lot of feedback as well and just a lot of input across the board, you know, some wanting the whole district to be 100% virtual at home as the safest option and some, you know, saying we should all be back full time just like normal and a lot of people supporting the hybrid model too.
Who's talking?
So lots of good comments and feedback. So I really appreciate everyone getting engaged and responding so quickly to the survey, both both parents and staff.
Doctor Lindsay?
My comment is I too received a lot of phones. Oh, can you hear me? Oh, good. I received a lot of phone calls and emails.
Increased volume, maybe other participants.
Somebody else talking or? Anyway, my my regret is I know I can't make everybody happy. I I too was extremely impressed by the input on all all specters of the matter. Everybody cares and we care for your kids too and want the best education we can do. It's going to be a very difficult decision. But I I was really impressed by everybody's efforts and sincerity. It really was. So that's all I got to say.
About the same for me. A lot of comments, a lot of passion both ways. And I'd just like to remind everybody tonight that we're going to hear a lot of opinions and I ask everybody to be respectful of everybody's opinions whether whether or not you agree with them and to, you know, look at this with an open mind. So that being said, let's go on to the citizen communications. And we have, we have a few that showed up in person because they that's, I guess that was their choice and and they showed up. So we have somebody getting them right now. So stand by.
Nate, I would suggest that if if people online wish to comment as well, have them introduce themselves, you know, that I am so and so and, you know, comments just like the people coming in.
Absolutely. Say your name.
The microphone is up here so you'll have to speak loud so everyone.
Do you guys want to come up here to the triangle?
This is Carol McKernan.
And I'm Dennis.
Do you need me to speak through this?
Yes.
We are in the middle of a serious global pandemic, but the main thing I want to say as regards the schoolchildren of Mineral Point is that our first priority should be their safety, which would also because of the highly contagious nature of the disease extend to their parents, grandparents, friends, teachers, staff and our community in general. The truth is that places were opened back up too soon. I mean, opening up bars and tattoo parlors, really? As a result, the numbers of cases and deaths continue to go up. Wisconsin and all of America reopened on May 20th. As of May 22nd, the U.S. had over 1.5 million cases of COVID and 94,000 plus deaths. As of today, July 20th, the U.S. has over 3.7 million cases and 140,000 plus deaths. At at this average per month increase, that's an additional 545,000 deaths in a year's time. We need to realize that these are alarmingly increasing numbers and that we are not even at the peak yet. And knowing that this disease spreads exponentially, think that could add up? I do not mean to be flip here. This is literally a matter of life and death. Therefore, parents need to have a safe, all online educational system available and in place for their children instead of opening up the schools totally. Classes have been presented online before and they can be done that way again. It is far preferable for students having to make up some schoolwork down the road, much of which can be done online from home now than being totally up to date but deceased. In addition, opening up school three days a week is essentially opening up in general with just a lessening of the spread of COVID-19 among students and others. And additionally, the school board needs to take into consideration the legal liabilities of reopening up the schools too soon. And what does it say to the kids that we're not making their safety our number one priority? We just can't do what we'd like to do. We have to do the right thing. And the Mineral Point School Board now needs to have the fortitude to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Carol's covered a few things that I was going to cover. So since we don't read our notes, that's what happens.
Could the individuals identify who they are? I didn't hear who they who these individuals are.
We are the McKernans, Dennis and Carol.
Oh, hi, Dennis.
Yeah. So anyway, I guess my first thing I wanted to say is I felt that this shouldn't just have been a survey to parents and other kids. It should have been city, their system wide so people have input. So I'm feeling that it's a little bit of an insult to the rest of us that you didn't send the survey out to everyone. It's not just about the the school kids and it's not just about the teachers' parents. And it's not also just about the who's affected by this in the school system. This is a, this is basically a community-wide decision that needs to be made and that's where you're missing something here. And I realized that that would be a little bit more difficult. You'd have to spend more time, more money doing this, but the school board has always been pretty much able to get out the information they need to accomplish anything they've wanted to accomplish in the past. So I would suggest just as a way to rectify that problem, that you do send out a survey to everyone else before you make a decision. All right. My concern is that in our haste to get students back into the schools, we may be jeopardizing the health and safety of our entire community. Safety is the number one priority has been stated by many health officials, both locally and nationally. Therefore, we're at the most critical point in the decision-making process and that is can schools be opened strictly? I believe myself that we're going too fast to be able to do the right thing here. At this time, the virus is growing rapidly and cities and states have reopened too soon to the point of hospitals not being able to give the care that they need to to handle the infections. People have died because of it, about 140,000 of them, more than that actually, have taken place and we need to take into consideration how we may be a factor in what comes up next. We've been lucky so far in Iowa County, and there's another county surround us because we've been doing the right thing, the right safeguards. Let's not mess things up just because we get in a hurry. It's wrong to expect schoolchildren to consistently follow safeguards when adults around them are failing to do their recommendations themselves. Okay, I'm trying to skip over the stuff that Carol's already covered. Okay, the other thing is that we we have no way of knowing who's going to be having this as school goes on if you have in school classes. If students aren't showing symptoms, but they're carrying the virus, it can be then spread throughout the school and larger community without anyone knowing it until someone comes down with a serious complication. It's now taking 10 to 14 days to receive the test results and in the meantime, these kids are still going to be in school. Interacting. Okay. Okay, in in closing, here is Sun Prairie and Madison. They made the decision to do virtual school here. A doctor and his wife in Arizona, I heard this morning, have chosen to have their kids do virtual schooling only despite of the school system's decision to reopen. I'll repeat what Carol said about make no mistake, this is a life and death decision to make here and I think we need to proceed safely and responsibly using facts, not emotions in our choice. California, Arizona, Texas, Florida and other states have already shown the results of making those hasty decisions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, is that the only? Okay. Okay. Next, we'll go on to, we're still on citizen communications and I had an email from Mom May Groom. Are you with us?
Yes, I am here. Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board. I'd like to open by reading a comment I added to a Facebook post before last Monday night's meeting regarding the difficult decision to face. As a former Mineral Point School Board member, I recall some very tough decisions. None of those decisions came close to this one. There will be parts of this decision we will like and parts we may hate. It will be impossible for the board to make us all 100% happy. With that in mind, I hope that we will respectfully voice our opinions and gracefully accept their decisions. Amazingly, most, if not all, comments on the original Facebook post remained respectful as parents and community members discussed various options. Unfortunately, this was not the case in last Monday night's board meeting. I listened as one board member berated the administration, staff, at least one other board member and community members who have and are taking COVID-related precautions. I called that board member the next day. While the conversation was mostly amicable, I did not get the impression that he appreciated just how offensive his behavior was. And I received no assurance that it wouldn't be standard fair in future meetings. As pointers, we often disagree. As citizens, we expect our school board to consider the various ramifications of their decisions. This will sometimes involve vigorous, respectful debate. When one demeans others, it makes me wonder how solid their position is that they must resort to such tactics. It also makes it much harder for me to consider any valid points that person may have. We are not Washington DC. We are not Madison, Wisconsin. We are Mineral Point. We have an unspoken pact, be considerate. That doesn't mean we don't have strong opinions or differences of opinion. That's healthy. That does mean that our board meeting should not resemble the Jerry Springer Show where the loudest person seems to be the only voice in the room that matters. I want to support whatever decision this board comes to tonight. That will be much easier if your discussions remain civil. Balancing the social and physical well-being of our students, staff and community at this time is beyond difficult and crucial. So I implore each of you to listen with an open mind and accept that there are seven people making this decision on behalf of 2,500 people. I ask each one of you to be respectful to other board members, the administration, staff, parents, students and the Mineral Point community tonight and going forward. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. Is there any any more citizens that would like to communicate? If so, please start by stating your name. One at a time. All right. If not, we are going to move on. Okay, president's comments. Yeah, that's it. Okay, let's go for items for information discussion. We have the Kramer Brothers and now the survey results for families and staff regarding opening this hall.
So I will pull up the
You're muted, Mitch.
You're muted, Mitch.
All right. Hopefully I didn't make anybody nauseous. So the response, as Andy Bush mentioned earlier, an 83% response is a phenomenal response. And as you look at the graphic on the screen right now, you're currently looking at the responses for option A, which was 100%, five days a week, every student, every day. And you see kind of the breakdown of the number of people that support that ended up being 57.5% and the number of people that oppose that 42.5%. And I, first of all, I guess I should say I want to thank the admin team for putting together these results, compiling all of this information to have it ready and available for tonight. So if you look at those percentages out of the 348 responses, 200 were in favor and 148 were opposed to that. And then a a great deal of comments that were pulled off of the surveys, a lot of things and I'll try to summarize to the best of my ability. A lot of things really not not in favor, not crazy about their children wearing masks, the younger the children, the more difficult it is for it to stay in place or for them not to fidget and move with it. You know, and I can I can speak from personal experience, not as a provider or in the medical profession, you know, you put a mask on, you start talking and the mask starts to move and make trying to stay as protected as possible so that, you know, you you keep readjusting the mask. A lot of concerns about the social emotional well-being of students and their needing to be in school, needing to be communal in nature, around friends and teachers interacting with each other, you know, and and no one would ever deny any of those kinds of things. But there were also comments, you can see the top one, not full time this fall. About if there was a vaccine, I'd be in favor of this. Not necessarily the case right now. If everybody's back, it's difficult to social distance. So there are great many comments on on both sides of the issue for option A. And again, a lot of things, especially our youngest students, my kids have a hard time wearing a mask. I don't believe that they should wear a mask. And just a lot, a lot of responses. See, some people, A, I'm not concerned about this. So I will try to get us down to option B, which was the hybrid option. And a lot of great comments. So I want to thank everyone that that took the time to fill out the survey and respond. I'm not going to read all the comments. I have read through probably 85% of the comments that were posted and there are some good ideas, things that we can work towards as we as we move forward. Option B was the hybrid and and we kind of tried to explain that in the elementary, you were looking at half the grades, half the grade levels in on Monday and Tuesday and the other half in on Thursday, Friday with a cleaning opportunity on Wednesday. And at middle school, high school, middle school was going to be the sixth graders in twice a week, seventh and eighth graders in once a week. High school, each grade was coming in once a week. And as we kind of threw out that hybrid option where it's when you're not in the building, you're looking at virtual opportunities. Were 66.6, 67% and the no's were 33%. So 232 people said yes, 116 said no. And again, pulling out comments, you can see that first comment, face masks are not necessary. A lot of comments in here, again, more more food for thought as we move forward. If if our direction is the hybrid, you know, can there be something that gets kids in the building two days a week instead of one day a week? Because we all, we all know that the best education that we can provide is a face-to-face education, the ability to interact, the ability to recognize students that are struggling, support students that are, you know, growing and blooming. We we all know that that's the best education possible. A lot of comments around, you know, I think as much as I would love, five days a week, a hybrid makes the most sense at this point in time. You know, a comment I've heard from a lot of administrators, kind of in the middle of the screen, I'm comfortable with this. However, I think kids will interact outside of school and not sure if any option would accomplish anything because of this, A would be better of the two options. That's this individual's feeling. And I've heard some of those things, you know, school's out, kids are going to hang out together. And I guess my answer to that is we have control of that, you know, we we can try to control the interaction, the safety of our students and the education to the best of our ability if they're in the building. Some shared how difficult it is to working parents at home. If the virtual option, the hybrid option isn't available in the evenings, it's going to be very difficult for me to be able to help support my children. So again, comments on both sides of the issue and, you know, you can see model recommends the DPI guidelines, following the CDC guidelines. We we try to take all of those things into consideration when we put a plan together. And I think when we get to the option C, which was 100% virtual, I don't think anybody will be surprised by the results that you'll see here in just a minute. And as I, I think I alluded to at last Monday's meeting, there isn't one staff member, there's not one administrator that really wants us to be 100% virtual. Because we know the difficulty that that brings about. But again, if if school were to start and we were to start at 100% virtual, 83% said no, almost 84% said no. So 291 of our respondents were against and opposed to 100% virtual. As we talked last Monday, virtual is an option for those parents that that think that that is the safest, best model for them. We would certainly offer that virtual option for those students and provide the best education we can using that mode of of teaching. And I can go back to then staff surveys. And 79% of the staff responded. So option A, 100% everybody back. You can see 60% were opposed to that and 40% basically supported that. Ventilation, construction, obviously at the elementary school, there are a few other things that that kind of factor into how things will play out there. Concerned about at-risk population, concerned about special ed populations, concerned about our youngest readers who need to see the mouth of a staff person if we're talking about making letter sounds and putting words together. And just difficulties around what's the best approach for for providing that instruction? If we go down to option B, which was the hybrid again. As far as the teaching staff, 81% were in favor of that. 19% opposed. I think, you know, a lot of this might be the best model for us to start. It gives us the possibility of being in school and face-to-face options for the longest period of for the longest period of time because of the cohort modeling. And again, jumped down to 100% virtual. And surprise, surprise, 94% of the staff said they don't want that. They do not want that as their educational opportunity, as a 100% virtual. They are caring, compassionate, motivated, individuals, professionals, dedicated to providing the best opportunity for kids. And that sometimes means needing to give somebody a hug, a pat on the back, a high five, a boost, a shoulder to cry on, all of those things. And you can't do that with the same level of effectiveness if you're 100% virtual. And they understand that for some families, that might be the best option. And for some staff members, that might be their only option due to their health concerns. Other school districts that I'm aware of, and I'll ask other administrators to chime in. In the last meeting I attended virtually, Iowa Grant had shared their plan that they were looking at going four days a week with one day being virtual. Dodgeville, they're looking at their sophomores, juniors and seniors being virtual with maybe one day face-to-face. But then they're going to use space at that high school to try to spread out the other grade levels to try to get some more social distancing opportunities. And I had heard that Darlington was coming back, they're looking to get everyone back five days a week. So I would ask any of my other administrators to chime in, if you know of any other school districts that you've talked to on, on what their plans are for starting in the fall.
Mitch, Darlington is going to have a meeting August 3rd. I think the discussion is going to continue.
Okay.
Did you mention Mount Horevich?
I did not.
I believe they're doing what we're doing, they're looking at two days in person and then the rest virtual. I believe there's some smaller districts in the area, Benton, I don't know this firsthand, but from another administrator, Benton and Highland are looking at five days in person. Their facilities, I believe, are allowing them to naturally socially distance. They have smaller classes than we do, more space, so, but I can't confirm that.
Yes.
Did you say anything about River Valley?
I did not.
I believe they're going five days from what their website said.
And I, and I didn't, I can follow up with Matt on, on and Highland. They had said there at their last, at the last meeting I was part of, that they were looking at everybody for the same reasons, they might have a grade level of eight or nine or 10 kids and they can easily spread those out and maintain social distancing because of the size of their districts. Mr. Austin?
I do know Southwestern is planning five full face-to-face days too. That's what the board has directed them down there, I've got a friend that works down there, so.
So I know we're all over the place. You know, had we looked at anything else? I can say we've spent a great amount of time looking at multiple opportunities. One of the first proposals was to actually have grade levels at middle school, high school coming in twice a week with a Wednesday opportunity to clean. So it might be sixth and seventh on Monday and then sixth and eighth. And then at the high school, you know, freshman sophomores, Monday, Tuesdays, or sorry, freshman, Monday, Tuesday, sophomores, Thursday, Friday. And they would, every other week. And I know at the middle school, high school, there was a push to try to make a touch or have a touch at least once a week to do some more check-ins, to be face-to-face. We looked at options of limiting the number of elementary students using some of our specialists to help take a section of three and make it a section of four, trying to pair different grade levels in the building at, on different days of the week. We know those ages are as crucial as it can be. We looked at transition, the sixth grade transition, the freshman transition, trying to, how, how can we best accommodate and best have face-to-face opportunities for those students because of making such a big transition into a new area? So it was, it was not just a, hey, this is it, we're just going to steal this from the state and make it mineral points. We, we met multiple times. We each had contacts with the DPI and different school districts and different administrative levels in different school districts and use that information to, to try to put together a recommendation. In a worst-case scenario, and to come back to Mr. Austin's point, I know I spoke with the superintendent at Southwestern and he's relatively confident that it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. We get closed by the county health department because we have an outbreak, but they were hoping to try to get as many days in with face-to-face as possible. And, and worst-case scenario would be the, the health department coming in and telling us, you have an outbreak, you need to shut down, at which time we would have to go to 100% virtual. But that the health department would, would give us those guidelines. And, and probably one of the toughest things, if, if we're all back and some of the comments that the parents had made, and you've heard this before, some of the contact tracing would become extremely difficult, where you couldn't isolate just a smaller group of people. And, and therefore, because you can't do that, you would need to shut down and for that 10 to 14-day window. If there were, if we were in that hybrid model, our hope as an administrative staff would be that even if, or maybe I shouldn't say if, when the virus comes into school in the covert model, it has a smaller impact on student learning, it would allow other groups and grade levels to still come into the building face-to-face. We would know that Mrs. Gorgon's third grade classroom needs to be shut down, but the other third grade class maybe can continue, or all the other grade levels can still continue. Or we need to have the freshmen skip a rotation one week due to having to be quarantined, but the rest of the high school and the rest of the middle school can come in. And, and that was kind of the logic behind why we were hoping to use the hybrid. The other administrators, please jump in.
And I'll add into that, if the freshmen had to skip a rotation as far as, because we had to quarantine them for that week, I believe we would go more along that lines. If it's Monday when they're coming in, but they're not there, that would be that virtual, you have these all eight hours set up and still be their normal classes, would just be a live Zoom meeting that week for each class in their rotations. So I think that's something we can make work in that sense.
Mr. Renwick or Ms. Dahl?
I think it was well explained, this is not a clean plan by any, I mean, no, there's no plan that's clean, you know, it's, how are we going to balance the virtual and the in-person? That's something we're working on now, if that's what we decided to go with, but.
Yeah, obviously, nothing's going to be ideal. But one of the things with the blended is I think we have an opportunity to be face-to-face for a longer period of time where if we go back five days full-time, the risk of exposure could, could shut us down.
And Mitch, this is Angie, I'm just going to add that, just so the board and those listening, the special ed department and other people services department will meet following the board's decision to come up with a plan. But I don't think, at least speaking from special ed, R I P teams and our staff will be working together to individualize student learning or therapies as needed. So theirs may not look exactly like the hybrid or virtual model that all others, you know, that everybody gets. There's, theirs might be tweaked based upon student needs as well.
And as a smaller group, it might be easier, we can, because I've talked with Ms. Klein about, you know, can we use a Wednesday as another touch day for some of our high-needs students? And it's, it's a little bit easier for us to work with them, with those staff as well.
Yeah, absolutely, and like I said, I, I, it, it isn't until we know the direction that the entire school is taking, it's, you know, just kind of throwing things up in the air and constantly rotating. So our department is meeting tomorrow to brainstorm ideas. And then, like I said, we'll be meeting and talking with families to help figure out what works for them. But Wednesdays has kind of always been on my radar, you know, scheduling individual or small groups, we might offer some home-based therapy if, if families are willing to allow an individual into their home. So I, I know that when I was reading through the, the comments, you know, students that required special education or supplemental services, that was a question on how would we get them those? And so I wanted to let everybody know that, you know, we're considering all kinds of things and going to be brainstorming tomorrow how we can reach the most students and, and meet their needs individually.
So if you're asking me, as I look at the results of those surveys, it, it seems, in my opinion, in my opinion only, that the hybrid model seems to have the most amount of support. Can that hybrid model change? Absolutely. And I, and again, I think there are a lot of wonderful comments, a lot of things that we can take and make adjustments to as we move forward. But I would open it up for any questions, comments, concerns and direction that the board would like to give.
I would like to, can I speak first?
Well, is this still about the survey results or are we going to move on to the actual discussion?
No, it was about a survey, so. Mine is about a claim made about myself during the citizens' comments, okay? Is it okay to speak?
Oh, yeah.
So I got the floor. That comment was totally unfair. It really is nothing more than an attempt to silence the opposition. And if we can't, if we can't say what's on our minds at a board level, then what, what are we doing here? And I do question the leadership of, of our administrators at some point. Not, not that I'm saying they're doing a bad job, but this, this proposal was brought forward. There was no other proposal even, even discussed before Monday night's meeting. And I thought, I thought, and I think that was wrong of the administration to do that. And going back to the person that made the claims against myself, merely, I think the person is a little upset that she lost in the assembly race a few years ago. And, but what I admire about that is most people would, would just kind of go away and not say anything when they lose, but I find it, I find it honorable that, that she's still in the political spotlight. And that's all I have to say about that, so let somebody else go.
Okay, yeah, let's get back on topic here now with the survey results. Is there any questions or comments on the survey?
I have a comment on the survey results. Looking at the comments coming after question number one in the parent-facing survey, Mitch had alluded to the fact that there were several comments about wearing masks. There were 35, there, there's probably more than that, but as I read through it, I counted at least 35 comments of people who said either it will be a struggle for my small children to wear masks or flat out, my kids will not wear a mask. And in perhaps my naive mind, when I pictured trying to get more kids back to school more frequently, in my mind, we were all doing our best to still wear masks and, and use hand sanitizer and social distance. And that was pretty eye-opening to me that like, okay, we're not in la-la land if, if, let's have a real perspective that there's a, there's going to be some resistance to some of the basic safety measures. And so that was eye-opening to me personally, and I wanted to share that insight in case anybody else had, or been similar.
To that, I mean, we talked, I don't have a problem wearing a mask. We sat for four hours last Monday and wore, I don't have a problem. Like you said, there's going to be resistance to whatever we decide tonight. And I think to me, the mask is a very small thing, we, we don't even need to discuss it. It's here, whether we like it or not, it don't matter.
So in my mind, it was more like 35 separate comments from one question, recognizing, they made it very clear to me that I cannot just take for granted that if we encourage people to wear masks, that that means that kids above third grade are going to be wearing masks, because that is, and then some of them were really valid reasons. So I'm not trying to minimize that, there are kids with sensory issues or respiratory issues. But it's, it's something we need to be aware of and let's not paint a picture in our minds that isn't going to reflect reality.
And that's also going to be an issue, whether we go with the hybrid model or whatever we choose. That's just a harsh reality of the situation we're all in.
Anything else on the survey results, the survey itself?
The numbers, the yeses and nos for options A, B and C. I'm just curious as to what the board thinks. How do you read the numbers? I, I, what, I mean, you can interpret the numbers many different ways. And I'll just give you my interpretation. Clearly, as Mitch mentioned, the virtual option is, is the least favored. So it leads us to the other two. And before I go, I'd like to have somebody explain the, the survey. Now, my wife filled it out, I thought it'd be unfair if I filled it out for, for our family, so I had my wife fill it out more, more, I don't know, I thought she'd do a better job than I could do. Could, could you vote for all three? Could you vote yes on all three?
You could vote for two for sure. Now, Joel, are you on?
Yeah, you could vote for all of them. That was, I think, the direction of the board last week. We felt as an admin team that you just wanted to get people's comfort levels. So some people might have been comfortable with all three and some people might have not have been comfortable with any of those, so.
I think what you're alluding to is you, you could have had some people vote yes on all three of them.
Well, right, but clearly they did because option C was, was clearly.
Well, and I think, sorry to interrupt, I think the way question, or C was written, is you wouldn't vote yes for all three. Because C was written saying, I don't feel comfortable with the first two. It wasn't necessarily written to say, I'm okay with virtual learning. It, it was written to say, I don't feel comfortable with A or B, I would be choosing virtual learning. Which I think is valuable for us to have an idea that 59 families are going to stay home no matter what. And we can assume that 59 of the no's to question A and B are the same 59 that answered yes to question C. And it gives us a little more value in the numbers.
Definitely think that's a safe thing to bet on.
Otherwise, yes, I mean, there are definitely people answering yes to A and B.
Yeah, but they're comfortable, my wife did, I know that.
And I think you look at the comments that, that kind of follow those, both those survey questions to really try to root out where, where people are. I think that, that helps direct, and there were some people that said, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with either one, I'm, I wish it was this, but I think we're better off here. I, I think there is a lot of comments kind of along those lines as well.
Are we going to have a protocol in place if, if numbers start to fall? Whatever, whatever option we choose. When, when will the board reassess the school?
I agree, that was one of my main questions too, is when are we able to, is it quarterly? Is it, you know, where, hey, things are going great? You know, can we, can we jump ahead and say, you know, hey, maybe we'll see what Southwestern is doing? But again, this, I don't want to get off-topic on the plan for reopening as, as far as the survey results. So we'll decide, we can. But yeah, we'll talk, but I, I agree, and I think we'll talk about, we should talk about that right away and get into, into that.
Yeah, the admin, the admin team had the same questions that you did.
It's important that we have somewhat of an idea because that, that'll depend on what, what option or what does the first one look like? If we're going to vote one day a week, if, if the number has dropped by 25%, the positive case is. in the positive cases, and then we're going to readdress it, it's different than, you know, we got to wait till the first semester.
Yeah, which is, you know, a long time.
Right. Why don't we check and see if the doctors have any input and then we can move.
Yep. Dr. Dunn and Dr. Lindsay, do you have any survey questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I do. I think that's a very good question about when to reassess. I thought the same thing, but I, I would think monthly at our board meeting. Because you got to go with the state and local statistics and then also see our schools performing. I think a monthly agenda item should be there. Because if cases drop, vaccines available, I'm all for getting them all back, you know, in school, full-time, 100%. But until that time, I, I thought the survey clearly went with the hybrid model. And I know it won't make everybody happy, but anyway, that's my comment.
Dr. Dunn?
I have no additional comments on the survey. I, I think it was good of Larry and, and Andy to just point out how the, how the survey was worded and how we should interpret it. And especially Joelle's comments were helpful in terms of just saying, what's everyone's comfort level with every option? And realizing that people could vote for more than one. So I, I think that was a helpful discussion.
I think if you, if you, you know, you turn on the nightly news, whether it's out of Madison or out of, you know, Washington or New York, and, and it's like, it's going to take a great deal of time, a great deal of time. And a vaccine may be coming no sooner than the first of the year and all of those kinds of things. And then I sit in on a meeting with Iowa County Health Department. And, you know, I think you get a little bit better picture that even if a vaccine were to come out, say, January 1, school-aged children will be very low on the list of priorities to receive the vaccine. It will be healthcare workers and emergency responders and high needs. You know, some of the people that are in our nursing homes, some of the high-risk individuals will be the first ones to get that vaccine. I would love nothing more than to say, given some of the metrics that might come out of Iowa County, some of the metrics that we can put together with our own medical advisory people can help us make that decision. Because I really don't want to have to wait until the semester. If we are seeing numbers drop drastically and, and things are looking really good, I, I wouldn't, I would not want to wait till January 17th or whenever second semester is to bring kids back. I would like to be able to make a much quicker decision, you know, with the board direction and, and be able to say, you know what, starting next Monday, we're doing this. We're going, we're going to bring in, at, at the high school level, we're going to bring in two grade levels per day. Or, you know what, we feel pretty good with the metrics, we're going to bring everybody back. But I would like to be able to make that decision, you know, with, with that guidance much sooner than a semester.
If, if nobody has anything else on the survey results, I think we're going to go into the items for action and then.
I have one more comment, Nate. I think, I think in respect to all the people that, with their various needs, I mean, I understand a lot of the disparity in the opinions. And I think whatever we come up with, we have to leave some flexibility for people that, for example, have kids that have illnesses where they can't be there and will have to go 100% virtual. We got to leave some wiggle room in all this thing for people. That's just my last comment.
All right, with that, we're going to move on to the items for action and the plan for reopening in the fall.
So I would say, based on survey results and administrative recommendations at this time, we would, we would offer the hybrid model as, as having the most amount of support from our parents that, that did respond to the survey.
Dr. Dunn?
Yeah, my question, Mitch, is with the hybrid model and, you know, given that there's a significant amount of parents and families that would like to be at school more often than that, did you guys, in your meeting today, you know, explore, or in previous meetings, do, do you feel like that you've pushed to the maximum the ability of the staff and the space to accommodate kids in school while maintaining the small cohorts rotating together, you know, without a lot of mixing and maintaining safe distancing?
Mr. Runway?
Yeah, we talked about that and, yeah, we, I even, I can say, I even generated just different options for that. You know, what, what would more kids in the building look like? One of the specific things is bathrooms. You've got so many restrooms available and that's a place where you can't really control mixing of cohorts. So the more kids you add to that, coming in and out of a bathroom, you know, when, when something flushes, does it aerosolize? Potential harmful virus. So, so then you have to look at, you know, additional staffing to clean those bathrooms more frequently. And then you have, you know, or do you look at like offsites? For example, we explored that, but that, that involves office staffing, custodial, transportation, food. I mean, the costs, it's the costs that start adding up because of the constraints of the building. So that's, we have looked at it though, and that's the challenge.
Anybody else? Gary, go ahead.
Well, I've compiled a lot of thoughts on paper, many hours sitting in a tractor and reading emails. So bear with me here, but before we had the plan to seek input from the parents last Monday, Board Member Heisner made a point that has stuck in my head all week. Kids need to get to know their teacher. So in the event we are shut down again, there is a trust and a relationship that is developed between the teacher and student. My daughter's third-grade teacher did a fantastic job last spring, keeping the kids' thoughts in focus while still challenging them to be better. Two of the emails we have as board members have received from elementary teachers further emphasize these concerns. And I very much respect not only their thoughts, then the way their wishes is how they can do their job the best. And that is to educate the children of Mineral Point. It is no secret that Mineral Point has achieved very high test scores as a, as a district. And to be honest, I as a board member have absolutely nothing to do with that as I've only been on this board for eight months. However, as a board member, I feel it necessary to hold myself accountable for these academic achievements to continue. Also, for kid's safety, you have to hold yourself accountable for that. I also think of FIAID Department and the duties that has been accomplished over the years. I find it very hard to believe that the same accomplishments will happen from home. And it's not their fault at all. These children absolutely need physical education. And you don't get that sitting at home with an iPad or a Chromebook unless the parents hold the students accountable. And I find it hard to believe that all of that will happen. The same could also be said for any academic elective or required course. As President Chambers said last week, parents have full-time jobs. Myself, like Chambers, said we are not teachers, nor do we have, nor do we want to be. This puts an incredible burden on families. Does every child learn differently? Absolutely. That is the exact reason why a relationship between student and teacher has to be established. I've said many times that I understand COVID is for real. I will not dispute or argue that, but in my opinion, it is here and it's here to stay. I understand what is at stake on this decision and I respect everyone's opinion on that matter. From an email we all received today, a statement from the American Academy of Pediatrics. It has publicly called for students to return to the classroom citing educational and social harms. Being away from school causes children, which is kind of a coincidence to me because today UW released a statement as a result of a recent study stating that two-thirds of students who are away from school, peers, and athletic activities will have a much better chance of suffering from depression. And we all know what the possibilities of depression can lead to. These are the findings of professionals. These are not my findings at all. I spoke with Darlington School Board Member Matt Christ, and he gave me permission to use his name and the fact that the Darlington School Board has received nothing but 100% praise for their decision to go back for both staff and parents. As a district, we quite often look to other districts as comparisons and neighboring schools like Iowa Grant, River Valley, Dodgeville, et cetera. And with thought of this district doing something different than in classroom at least four days a week is not acceptable, in my opinion, for our children's education. I talked to a well-known retired superintendent who lives in the community this morning. In his words, where the kids need to be in school at least four days a week. And as I said last week, there is a special needs student who is in the district with high risk and his parents want him in the school five days a week to be with his peers. I want kids to achieve their goals as bad as anything because I know personally the feeling of accomplishment. I want every kid to enjoy that feeling. My coach always preached that a champion is a champion on and off the mat. I never understood what that meant until I was out of school. But I look at the incredible accomplishment this district has achieved, especially recently, both academically and athletically. And I truly believe that a lot of that success started in the classroom because of a teaching staff that holds its students accountable and is able to answer questions one-on-one because of the relationship that is developed of being with their students every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, that was very well put together, Gary. Thank you for that. I know it takes time, a busy schedule. My question is to Mitch and, and your principals. If Darlington, Dodgeville, Iowa Grant, River Valley can somewhat go back with, with, I know there, there's some alterations, but why is, why is Mineral Point so much different than theirs? Anyone who can answer the question, please?
I, I don't know what they were using, where they sought input to, to make those decisions. You know, did they use the, the DPI guidelines? Did they use the CDC guidelines? Did they follow their local county health guidelines? We, we tried to tap into all of those things, all of those recommendations and, and present a plan that we felt best met all of those recommendations, including from some of our local medical providers. You know, there, there are times that we talk about what are other districts doing around us? Then there, there are times we talk about, maybe we need to be in the lead position. And quite honestly, you know, Highland and Mineral Point will be starting school in August. I only heard of one other school district that's going to try to start in August. Otherwise, everyone else is starting either September 1st or after Labor Day. So they have a little bit more time to kind of, to ride out the wave, so to speak, of, of how things are going. And, and every piece of guidance that, that I've gotten along the way said, have multiple plans. Have a hybrid plan, have 100% virtual plan. And when the time is right, yep, get, get as many kids back in school as you possibly can. Sat in on a meeting with the WIA, where a well-respected individual, Tim McGuine, Dr. Tim McGuine, I, I know him personally, worked with him personally for several years, basically told me what I already knew, that our student athletes struggled this spring. Our, our student athletes at the end of the winter seasons that, you know, the girls' basketball teams and the boys' basketball teams that the season was just ended, the baseball, softball track, all of those, they struggled because they didn't have that opportunity. And quite honestly, as a former athlete, a long, long, long time ago, and a coach, I, I get it. I understand. I went to high school with kids that the only reason they came to school was because the sport they wanted to play required them to be in school that day. And I understand how important that is. I, I'm trying to give you the best information that I can give you using the sources that we've gathered as an admin team, presenting it to you to make the decision how you'd like us to proceed.
And Mitch, I can follow up on that. I, I can't speak to what the neighboring districts' decision-making would be the, you know, how they arrived at that. I can't say I sat in on some principal meetings with area, southwest area, Wisconsin principals and a few that were late, this was before, but the plan from the DPI was already out. And they were, they were just, one person said, you know, I don't know what to believe. And so it just seemed like there was some confusion about which, which guidelines to go with. And I, I just commented that I, I just feel very fortunate that we have medical professionals on the board, that we're working closely with, you know, the many meetings we've had. And so that, maybe that's the difference, I, but I couldn't really say for sure.
And I guess I would just like to concur. I think we were really fortunate and very lucky to have such qualified experts in our local community with Dr. Fox and Dr. Dunn and any of the other medical providers or people who study this virus that have shared their expertise and knowledge with us. You know, I mean, we're lucky to have these people be part of Mineral Point and be willing to work with the staff and the administrators to come up with the plan that we feel is safest for all students.
I think, I think too with, you know, my position as athletic director, you know, with the fall seasons, we don't know what's going to happen with the, the WIA. But obviously, if we are risking exposure and we do have to shut the district down, most likely that's, that's going to be the end to our, to our fall sports season. So and that's, that's why I believe coming back blended gives us a better opportunity to be in school longer.
Just to continue to follow that, I, I believe this plan best suits our staff safety, our student safety, the community safety. I can't speak to other schools and how they're wrapping that up, but I would agree with Mitch in that sense that they do have a little bit more time. You know, we are five, six weeks out from school. Other schools have seven weeks. So they got a little bit more of a cushion and they may look at what we're doing as, you know, as we are the leader in a lot of things, look at what we're doing over those first couple of weeks and see if we're successful in order to change their plans. So I'm not quite sure where they're getting their information either, but I think that this plan puts forward the best amount of safety precautions for all.
Could I just say something? This is Tricia Spurley. I happen to work at Iowa Grant. We have a plan, but the board hasn't voted on it. We're not locked into it. And I know they've been asking for teacher feedback and they've asked for parent feedback. So I, it's a fluid situation, so I wouldn't say that we're locked into it. So, you know, and obviously they're also telling us to be ready to go virtual at the drop of a hat. So I guess I just wanted to point out that you might hear about other schools, but they're not necessarily locked into that plan per se. It's just what we're thinking at the moment.
Yeah, I saw that too. For every district that had a plan available, one district, at least on their website, I was researching this, was still talking about it. So, you know, that's, that's not surprising. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment if I may. I wasn't on any committees and nor did I work with the other healthcare professionals, but I did look at all the CDC guidelines, read them in their entirety, also read the state DPI guidelines and other states and countries. I've obviously retired, got a lot of time to read. So I thought this plan was absolutely excellent. And, and that comes, trying to find a way to be critical of it, but I see it really incorporated all the different things that are being recommended. But again, like I said, I think there needs to be wiggle room for people with special needs. And that's, that's the only thing that I've got. And I also want to revisit it rather frequently so we can, you know, if things improve, we can all be back at 100%. Last comment for me.
I got a couple of questions about the hybrid model. I had one person tell me that one of the administrators said that they would make it work where.
I had one person tell me that one of the administrators said that they would make it work where their children could be in school at the same time. And then another administrator told another person in the community that they can't guarantee that's gonna happen. I guess my question is how how are we gonna do that? Are we just gonna say, you know what, you're gonna have to deal with the fact your kids might be going separate days? Or is there a way we can make it work? Just so the, the community has clarity on the possibility of what is to come?
I, I think that's a, a great question. And, and I know that there is great difficulty in trying to put schedules together. I would look to my building principals. I, I don't know what kind of level of flexibility we would be able to have to say, well, you know, schedule today is a sophomore day, but your freshman has to be here because your third graders in, on these two days. So I, I don't know how deep into the conversation any of my building principals have gotten on that, but, but that is a, a great question, Gary, and, and certainly worthy of, of some additional follow-up.
That's our next step. If, once, once a plan is approved, we'll, then we start um working with pastors. So.
I, I like all the rest of you have spent a lot of time thinking about this. I have certainly made a sleeping grip on more than one night in the last week.
Why? What happened?
Everything that has been sent to me, I've gone off my way to do the research and so last week I made the comment that I wasn't sure who the blended model was serving best, whether it was the teach, it was because I don't feel like it's a perfect solution for teachers or for students and it places an incredible burden on parents. And we're faced with a question where we have to think about if we're gonna worry about doing the greatest amount of good by having students here as much as possible to educate them the best. Or the least amount of harm, which would be one hundred percent virtual, keep them out of the building completely, try and prevent the spread of, of this virus. And after just a tremendous amount of reflection, I feel like there's going to be challenges with the blended model, but in the end, I feel like it's the best option we have. It minimizes the risk while still at least preventing some level of in-person education. I hope that we don't have to stay in this model very long, but I think for now, from what I, from everything I've read and everything I'm, I'm seeing, I think it's our best path forward. But it is not ideal. And we are gonna put a tremendous burden on working parents and on our teachers and even on our students. So as we, if that's the path we move forward with and that, that's where my heart is right now, I, I want us to all think about what kind of support and structure we can give the entire community and even asking the community what kind of support and structure that they can give the school, because this is not going to be an easy road.
If the board decides to go with the, the hybrid model, there's gonna be a lot of questions, a lot of concerns. Who's gonna handle them? And, and do we, do we need to develop a, a task force, a committee to, to address and get these answers for, for the parents before school starts and then after school starts? It's, it's, it's going to be a, a very difficult situation, like you alluded to, Joni. And um, we, we certainly need to provide the resources for the parents at least to get their concerns addressed and their questions answered.
Or even to collect the questions, because I think there's so many things we just don't have answers to yet. And, and I don't, I don't think that reflects poorly on, on anybody in any way. I think this is just so big. We, it's redesigning our, the entire way we're going to educate. So we've got a blueprint where we've got a, a skeleton design here, but there's a lot of pieces, a lot of details that are gonna have to get filled in in the next five weeks. Five weeks, of course. Not a very big window.
I, I would say no matter what plan we go forward with, the more difficult work is still ahead of us. And, and then going back to uh May, you know, as, as you start to develop a plan for coming back to school, you need to be fluid. This needs to be a fluid model. You need to be able to move between one and another and have multiple opportunities available. And I, and I think we, we have tried to, to keep that in play where we know that if the health department comes in and says, you need to close your buildings down because we need to do the contact tracing, you need to do deep cleaning, we, we have to go one hundred percent virtual. We're not, our plan is to not say, okay, if it's fourteen days off, we're not going to do anything for fourteen days. It's the, the first day they're telling us, you have to go, be, you have to close, we're, we're going to virtual. We wanna jump right into that. The, the, the the model I think we all want to jump into as quickly as we possibly can is everybody back in the building as safely as possible to educate them. You know? I, I don't say this lightly. There's, there's been a lot of sleep that's been lost. Because I know, I live with a kindergarten teacher and I understand what that connection does for those students. It's the first time they're in the building for some students. It's the first time they're in all day for other students. And how they need to get a great foundation in that kindergarten level. But then it doesn't stop there. As they learn to read, they need to have that connection and that support. Every one of us as an administrator knows that. We're all concerned about the sixth graders because for kids that make it up to fifth grade, hey, I'm the big fish in a little pond and then all of a sudden I go to sixth grade and yeah, I might have been in that building for athletics, but but I've not been downstairs in these classrooms and I don't know these teachers. And all of a sudden, it's a tough transition period. And then the kids that are now freshmen, this class has a little bit more meaning. It's towards your graduation. You need to pass this class. You need to be successful. And we're trying to help you be successful now as a freshman so that you can be successful in high school, in college, and in the job force. We all know that. This is not the best decision that we can make because it's the easiest or because we don't want to have to work. We know it's going to be more difficult work as we move forward. We're just trying to make the safest decision we can, given the circumstances that are well beyond our control.
There has been a lot of discussion Mitch on virtual learning and, and the way it was presented March, April, and May of last year. You say it's gonna be better. Can you give me some example, examples of how it's gonna be better? Uh, last Monday night, we talked a lot about live streaming, cameras, video recording, uh, recorded, recorded, uh, live streaming and so on and so forth. How is it gonna be better?
I think, I think that in its own, in its own right would make it a, a better educational environment. If I, if I were a freshman in algebra class and I had to miss school, I'm quarantined, I could at least get online with my high school algebra teacher and have an interaction between her. And maybe she has some other algebra students in her class at that time, so I'm getting the same instruction, the same directions that those students are getting. I'm just doing it from at home in a virtual environment. The staff would be able, would, in, in in my thought process, unless somebody tells me different, I'm expecting staff members to be at school and they're having an opportunity to prep and, and maybe make some of those recordings so that they are there for students to tap into as they need them, which would definitely improve the virtual environment. If we all are using one of two platforms to provide the information, to provide the instruction, that will certainly improve the virtual experience. We have, and we're working on getting additional professional development for our staff in some of those areas as well. So again, I, I go back to what I'd said last Monday, you know, when it was Apollo thirteen and the engineer comes in with a box, it's got duct tape, it's got this, that, and everything else. Said we need to help them get back to Earth. This is what they have available. We have to put it together for them. Well, I, I would say back March, April, May, my teachers didn't even get that opportunity. It was do the best you can and here are some resources that we can provide for you. And they did a phenomenal job. Yes, it was not the same as face-to-face. And no one would argue that it was. But we are trying to line up professional development to improve our virtual learning opportunities on, on top of the things that I just mentioned now.
And I'll just, I'll just add to that. Um, I've considered that and I have considered the fact that we have the, I mean, I, we've alluded to it a couple of times tonight. I think we all agree, we have the best staff in the area. And that staff has now had two months since the end of school knowing virtual was coming at them in, in some form, whether it was everybody, some students in some form. And I have no doubt that, that they all across the board have been working to improve, to plan. And once we give them a plan here tonight, you know, with, with how, how their schedule's going to look, that they're gonna improve even more. So I, my, my faith in the fact that it will be better than it was in May and, and April is, is that the staff will make it better. You know, that's, I think that's what most of them have been doing this summer.
I would, I would certainly agree with them statements. The staff didn't, the staff did the best they could with what they were given last spring. That's just the way it was.
I understand. However, I, I believe our student population is, is starting out this year behind already. So not, not only do we need to catch them up, we need to maintain. And, and I think that's gonna be a difficult task. Seeing kids in the school one day per week and, and the rest of the, rest of the time, virtual learning.
It, it is gonna be, this, we're asking a lot. We're asking a lot of the students and a lot of the teachers and a lot of the administration. But no, none of us ask for a global pandemic. And unfortunately, this is, this is the situation that we're in.
I, I have a few things here. Um, does anybody know our, our mission statement of the school? What is our number one mission? I've talked to a few people about this.
I've read it recently.
Like, don't look at me, cause I can't tell you either, but I have an idea.
A section in there about preparing our students for a great big world.
Okay.
Okay. Actually, that's a good point. Our mission statement's got some hubwires on it. Maybe it should be readdressed.
So here's my, here's my reason for bringing this up. In the Marine Corps, mission accomplishment is number one. Troop welfare is number two. Okay? So this is where it kinda gets foggy for me because I can't look at it that way. These are students, they're kids, they're, they're staff, they're not, they're not Marines, they're not, you know, soldiers, they're not, they're not that. So that was one of the things I just wanted to say. And, and our, if our mission is to make these kids better and more, um, you know, educate them and everything else, I think this ties into that. Because what are they gonna do someday if they get put into this position? The next thing is do I want my kids to go to school five days a week? Absolutely. Would I send them? Absolutely. But here's, here's a but, we've asked doctors and professionals their opinions on this. So that would be, this is an example, Larry. If you told me to plant corn at three inches deep. Or no, sorry. If, if you told me to, what's the depth of corn? This is just a
Inch and a half.
Inch and a half. You tell me to plant corn at an inch and a half. On a thirty, or on a, what's temperature? I'm getting a little too involved. Sorry.
Forty-five degree day.
Okay. And I decide, I don't like the answer of the professional. And I decide I'm gonna bury my corn at three inches deep. That to me is, is the analogy that I kept coming up with my head and me in, in Mason terms, in, in other words. We've asked professionals, this is what they've recommended. That's where I'm having a hard time with um, you know, saying, y'all, I'd love to send my kids five days. The next thing, I think if we do the hybrid plan, we need to monitor other districts. And this has been talked about. We've, we've all mentioned it. We need to monitor every district that's similar size. I don't, not that I don't care about Milwaukee and Madison and, and Verona and Mount Hore, but they're not comparable. They're not at all. So we need to find that information. And we've all mentioned this too. It's about staying fluid with the plan. You know, hey, if this is working, we're, and uh, this is great, let's, let us, let's pull back in two weeks, let's put everybody in. And I know Dr. Dunn, you had a, uh, an article that I had seen. What, what color are we right now as a county?
Well, it's Yellow. You, you're talking about the, uh, the global risk?
No, our county risk. Remember that?
Or the activity level. There, there's two, there's two zones. There's activity levels designated by the Wisconsin Department of Health. And then there's a kind of global risk of being exposed that's, that was assigned to every country, including every state in the United States. So I think to your, what, what you're alluding to Nate is most other countries that were, that successfully opened their schools fully and safely were at the end of their surge of cases. They were at a decline in cases. They were at a they were at a place where they felt like it was, it was safe. And by any measure, you know, the United States and even Wisconsin and even Iowa County are not, are not at a place where we're having decline in cases. Now, in terms of risk activity by county, the Wisconsin Department of Health, Health and Human Services has, you know, assigned Milwaukee County at very high risk, very dangerous. Dane County is, is high. And Iowa County is moderately high. And, and so are the surrounding counties, Grant and Lafayette. So there's still a risk level that's not low or zero. So is that what you're alluding to Nate?
Yes, that was exactly, yep. That was it. Uh, so then uh, the other thing I had just kinda popped in my head was, you know, everybody sees all these articles. Everybody sees an article on this, well, this is a lie, this is a lie. Let's face it, if you want to find an article that fits your narrative, you can. There is conflicting data out there on everything. I mean, so that's where I tend to say, okay, let's look at the local people that we have a relationship with. I don't care about a doctor in Sweden that has an opposing opinion or two of them that do. Again, like I said, I wanna see my kids in school five days a week. But I'm not opposed to the hybrid plan to start with, you know, obviously monitoring everything else and hopefully getting out all the, all the butts in seats, as we say, as soon as we can. That's, that's my thoughts.
I'm gonna get this out of the way because I'm a risk taker and I'm not afraid to fail. And let's get this meeting over. I'm gonna make the motion that we go to school four days a week, being Wednesday the virtual learning day and disinfectant day. But the option to stay home if you do not feel safe and learn one hundred percent virtual. And if it gets shot down, then we know which route we're going.
I, I have a question. Are you saying in the cohort, cohort blended model, or are you saying four days?
Four days a week, Wednesday being the op, the virtual learning day and disinfectant day in the school. That's my motion.
But then your, your motion included Gary, the option, the option to do virtual learning if a family.
If a family chooses that they do not feel safe, that is their right and I have to respect that right, then they have the option of virtual learning.
And that option could be fluid as well.
Yes.
And just to be clear, you're talking about everybody?
I've talked about everyone.
We need a second.
It's not five days a week, but uh, I'm willing to compromise. I will, I will second Gary's option. Motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, let's have some discussion. Go ahead, Doc. Done.
You're muted, Aaron.
Okay. Thank you for the, for the floor. And thank you, board members, for great, well-thought arguments and points. I think everyone's making great points all the way around. So just a few points. I, I'm supporting the hybrid model as proposed and I'm, I'm gonna vote against this motion. I, I'm supporting the hybrid model as proposed and I'm, I'm going to vote against this motion because I don't feel like it, it checks all the box for, for safety starting out. But just, just to, to explain further why I'm supporting the hybrid model and not this motion. First of all, I think that with four days, four days a week, all kids back, we cannot guarantee safety of these kids. Especially we can't guarantee that we can put them in small enough groups that they can maintain safe distancing and that we can have a controlled quarantine in order to keep the rest of the school open. I also think doing a model that allows for small cohorts actually improves in-person learning, makes it more efficient because now you've got a better teacher to student ratio instead of eighteen to one or twenty to one, you've got ten to one. Now it's not every day of the week, but you've got small amount of students with one teacher. So you can have more efficient learning. And I, I, it's, it's more consistent. These guidelines are more consistent with the DPI's recommendation, CDC guidelines, and even the American Academy of Pediatrics. Now we, we, we focus on the bold statement that says the goals of every school district should be to put kids back in school because of all the benefits. That is absolutely the goal that this, this, this district should have. But the, the remainder thirty pages of that statement talk about how to do it safely. For example, it talks about maybe we shouldn't make masks a high priority for younger kids because of all the reasons and concerns expressed by the parents and staff. Maybe we should focus more on hand sanitizing, keeping them safely distanced. Lots of different suggestions for different age groups that are extremely helpful. I would encourage you to read the entire statement that gives a lot of guidelines that this hybrid model is following. And so I think for that reason, it's the right thing. My second point is every decision we make here is going to be difficult for somebody. And I think that doing a hybrid model and creating some scheduling difficulty upfront, making it more predictable for parents to plan ahead and know what to expect, when their kids have to be in school, when they have to be home, and at least plan for it is better than unpredictable difficulty, which is basically, let's send everyone back to school until there's an outbreak and then boom, my kids are home hundred percent of the time and I have to scramble at work to figure something out. And I think the, the hybrid model allows us to withstand a positive case and stay open. And it allows parents to prepare for something consistent. In addition, I think that it's important that we proceed with caution. You know, think of it like a soft reopen, that we, we need to tiptoe into these waters because there's so many uncertainties. We don't know if kids are going to get sick in the first week or if this is going to be successful and it takes two, three months for us to have our first positive case. We don't know. Other things we don't know. We don't even have a school nurse right now. You know, we need to put all these protocols in place to feel confident that we can manage sick kids at school. And there's been a lot of great questions that need to be answered. The less kids we have at school at one time, the better we can manage that and sort out problems and troubleshoot without contaminating everybody else. In addition, once we meet like a month later, we'll have learned a ton about the first, first month of school. How did it go? How did our protocols go? How did our processes go? You know, was everyone safe? And I think if we reevaluate monthly, we'll be able to move forward in a smart way. And when I mean reevaluate, I mean both from a safety standpoint, how are the cases in the county? How are, are we having any cases in the school or, you know, uh, from a safety standpoint, but also reevaluating from an academic standpoint. How are the kids learning in the first month or two? How's the virtual learning going? How are they doing with their tests? How are they demonstrating knowing the material? Because from what I understand, this is going to be like a normal school year from a content and curriculum standpoint. They're, they're going to have high expectations. And can we meet those with a virtual and hybrid model? If the answer is no, then we got to rethink that. I think the hybrid model strikes a balance. So when a parent comes to me as a board member, but more importantly as, as a physician and says, are you comfortable with my kid's safety with the entire school back five days a week? And I have to look them in the eye and say, no. And if a parent comes to me and says, are you comfortable with my kid's ability to meet academic standards, being home a hundred percent virtually? I have to say no, which is why I'm not in support of the entire district going virtual. Like say in Milwaukee's doing or some of these schools in, in red hot zones. But I find that a balanced model that mixes in person with some virtual, allows some social distancing, allows us to follow guidelines that we can stand behind in case we get sued or in case someone gets really sick because of a school outbreak. I can stand behind a hybrid model and say, we took the recommendations from public health officials, national organizations, state organizations. And we thought this was the, the smartest plan going forward, the most careful plan going forward. And I can stand behind that. I can't stand behind every kid back even four days a week because I can't guarantee that those guidelines are going to be followed. So thank you for the time.
Any more discussion?
I'll maybe speak quick. Um, I also support the hybrid model. As Joni said, a lot of sleepless nights, a lot of consideration, rereading emails, re, regoing through conversations in my head. And I think there's tremendous, tremendous pros presented by whichever option the person talking to me was considering. But I look at, look at our different charges as, as board members and, um, you know, as students, we got to provide them the best education. Um, and we've got to provide them, you know, well, what we believe is the safest, safest experience. And those are kind of mixed. I think we also have to consider that we're employers. Okay. And we just got a survey back from our employees that says sixty percent of them don't feel comfortable being here five days a week. And I think that matters. You know, I, I think it's our, it's our job to protect ourselves from litigation. And I think the hybrid model, as Aaron said, provides us some protection because we have followed guidelines. You know, I'm concerned if there's an outbreak after we have presented a plan that follows guidelines and presented and asked our staff if they felt comfortable. And we get those answers and then, and then we ignore them. What kind of, what kind of protection do we have from liability if we happen to get a sick staff member? So I, I'm supporting the, the hybrid plan. Um, I did speak to, spent a little time, spoke to Mr. Austin and there is a next phase or a more aggressive phase where we can get another grade in the high school and another grade in the middle school. I'm not saying we should do that right away, but as, as we've all said, it's a fluid situation. And I think as, as soon as we feel good about step one, we should look at that and get two grades here today, two grades in the middle school. I think we need to consider, and it doesn't necessarily affect the bulk, but Mr. Renwick, we've heard from staff at the lower levels who, who would like to consider split days instead of every other day or two in a row. There's some costs associated with that, but I mean, if we're, if, if we're holding a little fun balance for a rainy day, I mean, it's raining.
It's raining.
I mean, let's, let's, you know, once we get a plan in place, let's get to work and, and figure out what we can do to provide the best experience for our kids with our decision. So that's, that's my two minutes of preaching.
Dr. Lindsay?
Nate, I'm going to vote no also to that once it comes up for vote. I've independently of Fox and Dunn, read all the stuff and more. And that four days a week does not fit any of the national guidelines, local guidelines, DPA, DPI guidelines, doesn't, it doesn't fit. And, um, I'll, I'll be voting no. That's just the long and short of, I wish I was a benevolent dictator. I could just get this done and say, I'm sorry, but this is the way we're doing it. You know? That's my feeling. They've got a great plan. I have to tell you, I was really impressed. Um, and, and looked at it from a very critical standpoint of not being involved with developing it, decided to research this stuff on my own. I've lost hours of my life reading about this stuff. Uh, I, it, there's no question I'm voting no on, on this initial, uh, no, no offense to Gary. I understand his viewpoint. But the plan that's been outlined, hybrid is, is good. It's out, it's really good. But nobody's going to be happy. I mean, everybody's not going to be happy, you know? That's it. All I got to say.
Is there any more discussion?
I have none.
All right, Andrew, call the question, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Eisner?
No.
Lindsay?
No.
Deppus?
Yes.
Chambers?
No.
Fails?
I'll make the motion that we accept the hybrid plan as presented with potential for the discussion by the board about the mask requirements and with the recommendation that we meet frequently to discuss ramping it up or, or going the other way.
I'll second it.
All right, we'll open that for discussion.
Does that motion allow for us to have continued conversations about things like the lower grade levels, specifically first graders and looking at half days instead of, instead of every other?
Yeah, I, my motion is intended to set the framework as presented and to continue to meet, to identify with, with all those suggestions we've gotten about how it works. Can you go identify the best way to, to move forward?
Mr. Austin, Andy kind of had mentioned something that you had possible in place. What does the timeline look like? Is it, uh, in two weeks?
The, the phase two part?
Yes.
So phase two would allow us to bring more kids back into the building. Um, it would be, it would, it would take a little bit of work because it's again, you have teachers that teach multiple grade levels, but um, I would suggest that it be a more along that monthly type of timeline that you reassess every month and see where we're at. And, uh, you know, if we feel comfortable with the numbers, let's move forward to that next step. Uh, I always, I'm a big firm believer, start, start slow to go fast here. Uh, as we move through this, we will gain more information and then we'll be, we'll be able to make better decisions with that information. And we may be able to skip phase two and go back to full, depending on what the numbers are. If there's a vaccine, other things like that. Successful treatments out there, but you know, I think that's a monthly type of thing. And I believe that's what most, most schools are reassessing right now that I've heard monthly or quarterly in order to do that. Dr. Dunn?
Uh, I just want to say for sake of discussion that, uh, I, I know that a lot of area school districts are doing various different things and, um, I know that a lot aren't set in stone. But I, I really feel like a lot of the area is looking to Mineral Point. You know, what's, what's Mineral Point doing? You know? I, and I, I want to own that decision. You know, I want to be the leader in this region as a district. And we should show that we are worth the high ratings we've been given. And I think the discussion so far has demonstrated those qualities on the board and the administration. I think the comments, um, from the staff reflect that. And I think the comments from the parents show how engaged of a community we have and how much they care about our district. And, um, I, 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 I just feel like starting this way with some flexibility to reassess, tweak it as we go, move forward is the right thing to do. And, uh, I think setting this example, you know, is going to be good. And I think that my suspicion is that before this is all said and done, there are going to be districts that rush to reopen and come Thanksgiving, they're all going to be closed. And there's a better chance. I can't make any guarantees. There's a better chance that Mineral Point will still be going strong. With maybe an occasional quarantine here and there or, you know, little hiccups. But this is our best chance to be able to stay open through the whole semester while other districts might end up closing completely.
And one other thing, you know, that, that's something we could look at every, I'm sure as an admin team, we would look at every week. You know, I think we're going to pay pretty close to the attention to the numbers and whatnot that we may look at. And then we may have a, here's our recommendation. Let's go forward with this next phase, next phase or anything like that. I would assume that you guys as a board would review it monthly, but I would think as an admin team, it'd be, you know, once a week for us.
I think as a board, we would, if there was a chance to open up, I think we'd be more than willing to have a weekly meeting. That's just my thoughts. If there was a chance that, hey, we can expedite this as, as the numbers come in and I don't think
Sure. And I think that's just a, a good open line of communication between the admin team, the board and, you know, how numbers are going. But I think that's something we can do, you know, communicate that every week, you know, this is looking more promising. Let's get that meeting set up and talk more about it. Um, I don't know if it's something that has to be on the calendar every week, but I think it's something that we can obviously have on our, on our minds all the time.
I appreciate your optimism, Matt.
Hey, I, I want kids back here more than anything. Trust me. It's, it's not, it's, it's not very fun being in this building because I like to be out amongst the kids and I, I love to see what they're doing and interested in and all that. But I do want to get kids back here fully. But I do believe this is our best option to get to that point.
It's reassuring hearing them words from, from one of our principals. And, uh, I just ask Matt that, that you keep it on our virtual learning and, and make sure that your kids in this high school are getting what they need.
Absolutely. And that, that's something that we, we've already kind of set up some, you know, meetings towards the end of the July here, just depending on what you vote on. To kind of move forward with, you know, here are more of the expectations with what it's going to look like virtually during the week and what it's going to look like that way. Um, and I, I do believe there will be a little more project based learning, those types of things for kids to do because it's more of a blended type. And I think that lends a better option towards, you know, what college kind of looks like for some of these kids. Or what this will look like. Um, and offering some other work times and times to get some stuff done, but.
I'll kind of touch on that.
Oh, go ahead, Gary.
I was, I was just going to say, as an administration team, and I'm certainly not sitting here being critical, but you guys got a lot of work ahead of you.
Absolutely.
Probably a lot more than you ever planned on any other year. I would just, I would just request that there was no gray area or vague lines as best you can do. I understand it ain't going to be perfect. But try and get it as best as we can get this so we eliminate the questions.
Absolutely, absolutely. I would agree with that one hundred percent that we need to get a lot of things written out. Uh, and just, you know, instructions out there to families as quick as we can. Uh, we've talked, you know, we're going to start moving forward with, you know, whatever happened tonight. We've had talks amongst ourselves that, you know, tomorrow we need to meet and we need to start moving forward with, you know, here are the things that we need to lay out. But I would agree. You don't want to have gray areas in it. Um, and to get to that mask point, depending on the class and how, how they're spaced out in those classes. If you're past that six foot, there might be opportunities during the day not to necessarily wear a mask all day because of the group sizes and whatnot. But I think that's just things that we have to get those details out there.
I was just going to touch on the, the high school plan. And again, this is just an opinion, just to throw it out there as far as your planning. I really think being that high school age group, we could try to come up with something that holds these kids accountable every day of the week.
Sure.
Because let's face it, we know high school kids.
Harbaugh, I think you're right here, buddy.
It's, Nate, Nate, it's not just high school kids, it's middle school too.
High school and middle school kids. I, I agree, Vicki. I just, we need to start preparing these kids as soon as we can. Um, and this is a crazy year, but I really think we need to focus on that because.
Yep. And, and I have some ideas around that. And some teachers have, you know, there's some ideas out there that we need to work through and figure out, but I do have some ideas on that, on how to actually, we saw some really, really great things from a lot of teachers this spring that I think we can move forward with. And obviously some things that, you know, we need to change around, but some of those accountability pieces, I think we saw with different classes over the spring that we can move forward with too.
Crystal?
Yep.
If we are fortunate enough to have a fall sports season.
Yep.
Is there an opportunity to to kind of connect accountability to, I mean, if you're not in school during a day unexcused, you're, you're not to be at practice. Is there, is there a way, and I guess it's a you're, you're not to be at practice, is there, is there a way, and I guess it's a combination of, of Matt and Miss Dahl, to create that accountability if you did not participate virtually for the day? Uh, we let Coach Hunter and Coach Paul Skil know that, that so-and-so was not at school today and, and cannot practice.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Absolutely.
Definitely. We, you know, we've got, we've actually got issues with incompletes from the end of the year that kids are gonna have to satisfy before they even step on the practice field or the court.
I have two thoughts I'd like to share. The first one around particularly the virtual education is I would like to ensure that there is a feedback loop, whether it's from students or from parents about whether or not they feel like their, like their students are getting the quality of content that they need to continue to be successful. Because I was under the impression, and then granted, my experience right now is, is more on the, on the elementary school things, but that the school year finished out pretty good considering what we were working with, but I hear that that maybe wasn't everybody else's experience, particularly um as we moved through the grades, that maybe the, the curriculum wasn't as rigorous. We can't wait until the end of the school year and say, well, that did work or that didn't work. I think that community, that there needs to be a built-in feedback loop.
Absolutely.
Joni, uh, I can respond to that a little bit. Um, I've been co-teaching fourth grade, um, just to get some experience and, you know, how does Zoom work with instruction and kids and um one thing we've been doing with the kids, which I'll share with our faculty, is just once a week, we've been asking what's going well, what's been a challenge, what are some obstacles, what are some ideas? And the kids have been very insightful. Um, for example, they wanted to have like a morning activity when we connected, and so we, we put up daily polls to kinda review past content and um so, but I appreciate, appreciate that idea and that's something we are gonna move on.
My second comment was around sports and I realize we're waiting for, for official direction from the WIA, but we're sitting here making a decision about whether or not students can come to school to learn, and yet we're still open to having sport, sporting activities, and that feels a little weird to me, and I don't know if is that ping on anybody else's radar as like, we're saying we can't put them in school to learn, but we're still gonna let them all come to the football field to practice?
That's a very good point, Joni, very good point.
I agree.
Just put it out there.
There's a lot of money.
He can have his brakes on it.
Does anybody know, uh, is there a regulation where your kids gotta be in, in a physical school building so many days a week that you can be able to participate in sports? And then are those virtual satisfied?
You can homeschool and be in sports. Also, there's no, no regulation there.
All right.
Larry, there, there are specific rules regarding that, but in the situation we're in, there, when you combine the virtual and, and in-house, you're still considered a full-time student.
Well, just, just a point of, for thought, it was mentioned earlier about liability and uh we're, we're afraid to put kids in the building more than one or two days a week, but yet kids are in the gym practicing five days a week or whatever the case may be. Again, just something to think about.
And, and I know the WI is currently considering uh some options that might limit what sports take place in the fall, uh, might move some of the sports to a different time of the year to try to help all those student athletes be able to start and finish their seasons. So, so there are a lot of questions up in the air and, and, and yes, uh, Joni, I, I've been involved in a lot of those conversations too where, you know, we're trying to social distance in, in the building, but I'm gonna send 50 guys out on the football field to practice or in the locker room or, you know, 30 girls in for volleyball and so on and so forth. So there's, those conversations are happening um and, and, and there's no answer really, uh, you know, no good answer either when it comes to those things.
The SWAL Conference Athletic Directors are meeting on Wednesday. There's a lot of conferences that are, are like eliminating non-conference games or matches, so, you know, I'll try to update everybody with what would come out of that meeting. Of course, whatever the WIA decides that, you know, is going to um take precedent.
Can you send us an email, Vicki, when you hear something?
You bet, I will.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, if not, Andrew, call the question, please.
So this is to accept the hybrid as presented for further discussion regarding masks and have continued meetings to identify the best ways to move forward. Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Duffus.
No.
Sullivan.
No.
Chambers.
Yes.
All right, next is the approval of Fund 46 transfer.
The, the audit, um, it's almost 100% complete. Um, and as a result of the audit, we have the ability to transfer a recommended $240,000 into Fund 46. That leaves a little bit of money left it to, in case there is a bill that comes in that needs to be charged back to the previous fiscal year, and not um any remaining dollars would be um moved into the fund balance or left in fund balance. But I would recommend transferring $240,000 into Fund 46.
I will make that motion to do that. Seems like an over here to me.
Anybody like to second?
I'll second, Dunn.
Oh Mitch, I got a question. On our main driveway, is that asphalt gonna get replaced yet this summer before the start of school?
Yes.
And the list of other uh Fund 46 expenditures, uh, I'm thinking parking lot lights, bleachers, stairs, I heard are going in, in August sometime. The doors at the end of the gym, everything still on schedule?
The doors are in the gym. Um, my last conversation with Roger, the lights in the, in the far parking lot were supposed to be up by the end of this week. Um, the bleachers are coming. I wanna say, don't quote me on the date, but I wanna say it's like the 13th of August, somewhere in there, it's a, they're coming like a Thursday, Friday in August to get those done. And um, are scheduled to have that main driveway taken care of by Iversons um as soon as they can get here and take care of us.
I know they pulled the blacktop, the asphalt plant out of the quarry, I wonder when they're planning on doing it then.
Gary, you're a, you're a black, I mean, with township.
Not an expert.
But should that blacktop here for how many days before you drive out?
I thought so. I would just think since they're doing the job and the asphalt plant was already set up, they would have dipped.
Yeah, I, I, when I drove in the night, I thought, well, yeah, we're, we're a month and a few days away from starting school. Might, might.
I got, I got his email, let me, I'll shoot him an email and I'll ask him when.
Thank you.
When we're scheduled to get that done.
All right.
Um, how long do we have to spend, to spend the money? What is the deadline?
We, we could not start spending it um until, I believe it's Wednesday is the actual day, but um most people were telling it, them, August would be the first time when we can start to spend it. And now it can be uh rather fluid, we can put money in, uh, take money out. It was to be a, a 10-year plan, and when it was originally put together, um, there was, there were projects, um, window replacement at the elementary school, uh, complete the roof replacement at the elementary school, some technology upgrades, those things took place and, and were rolled into the regular budget, into the maintenance budget and other areas. Uh, so those, that a first initial list was uh basically taken care of. So we had met and created a newer list um that we can adjust and adapt as time goes on. Uh, there is no real, you know, you have two years to spend it out, um, but it's not, it's not something that the DPI would recommend that you sit on indefinitely as well. Uh, I can get you some more clarity to say, you know, is it a 10-year plan and it has to be spent out in 10 years?
Well, so, my, my question is, there was some comments in the staff survey about creating an environment, uh, particularly in the elementary school that's not currently climate controlled, to make those rooms more comfortable, and that would hopefully encourage people to, to do, to wear the masks more frequently, particularly since we're going back to school the third week of August. It, can we allocate any of that, rather than transferring all that money to Fund 46, could some of it be allocated or used right away to, to, whether it's window units, renting window units or, or buying more fans, but something to help make those rooms more comfortable for that first month or six weeks of school?
You, you would need, you would need to allocate the dollars to Fund 46 and we could turn around and use some of the monies out of Fund 46 to do those things. Uh, they, the, the, the building will become that when the building project is done. I don't know too many windows at the elementary school that are capable of handling a, a window unit based nature, how they open, uh, and so on and so forth. It, I, I completely understand, um, unless you're fully air-conditioned, there aren't any really nice school buildings in Wisconsin in August. Um, but certainly something that we can, you know, try to mitigate the best of our ability.
Joni's question about fans, I mean, that, that is something that I think Roger could purchase at, at any time, Joni, to circulate the air, but.
Correct.
I, I agree with you, Mitch, it would be, it would be premature to put air conditioning in there for, for one fall and then next year it's all ripped out and through the building project.
Right, that's, I had mentioned renting, if, if that's even a possibility, but is there something?
I understand, okay.
Dr. Dunn, go ahead.
Uh, just, just wanna discuss, uh, you know, potentially extra costs of trying to implement the hybrid model and trying to maintain these guidelines and deal with the ramifications of a potential positive case, sick staff, quarantine. Can you just talk us through, Mitch? Um, I mean, I know that the US House and Senate are looking at maybe an additional aid bill that would provide uh funds to schools, but I, I don't think we can guarantee that. Um, but I, the reason why there's a, that, that's being discussed is 'cause a lot of schools are anticipating a lot of increased costs because of this epidemic. You think of maybe extra busing, you know, uh disinfectants, maybe additional school nursing staff or additional teaching staff, like a couple teachers' age, something like that to, if we're gonna maybe expand uh more kids in school to keep the cohorts low. I mean, I, I'm sure there's a lot of other costs. I mean, we talked about fans, um, i- if kids have to wear masks or something like that, um, or even without, you know, just fans in general, just, you know, it, costs that maybe aren't in the budget right now. Um, I guess my first question is, have you anticipated a ballpark of what that might, of kind of a wish list or, or prioritize, maybe additional costs you're anticipating in the first couple of months? And um, is that something that if we, if we run a deficit on without an additional federal aid, is that something that would come out of fund balance to support uh at the end of the year, like Andy referred to as our rainy day fund? You know, I would consider this certainly possibly a rainy day type of year.
Let's hope it's only a rainy day year. Um, I, I don't know what to, to anticipate in a, in a second round. Um, there are a lot of, a lot of rhetoric around the second round, and I have not been able to apply for the first rounds uh grant monies yet because there was still a holdup. Kind of a, the Secretary of Education wants to see more money available to private schools, so there's kinda been a holdup as to releasing the funds, so there has been no application yet for me to fill out to get that first round of, I'll say. Um, we are, we are still purchasing equipment, uh, purchasing chemicals and things that we're, will continue to try to submit through the uh FEMA funds and through FEMA and the state. If they approve the expenditures, we would, the district would recoup 87 and a half percent of those dollars. There are things that we are still looking at a- as we get closer to the start of school, a, a couple of pieces of equipment that help disinfect um larger areas, kind of the UV light disinfectants and some additional chemical disinfectants that will help hand sanitizers and some of the, the equipment there. Uh, we run into some, some, you, you try to do the right thing and then you're gonna get penalized, because if you bring in hand sanitizer, let's say, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna buy the recommended amount of hand sanitizer for our school size, our pop for the year. That is also uh, that requires some storage and, and I don't know that we have the storage available to, to put a year's worth of supplies in. But we can continue to look at things that we need, that we know we need or will anticipate needing as far as equipment as a response to um the virus. As we move in, certainly, uh, some of the things can run right through the maintenance budget, you know, if we need to get fans to help circulate the air better, if there's things that we can do that way, uh, we can continue to purchase, make those purchases. And if it is directly in response to the virus, we will continue to submit that through the FEMA. So if there is indeed, uh, you know, when we get the first group of money, at this point in time, school will most likely be in session, and it would be an opportunity for us to look at, you know, if we do ramp up, you know what, some of this CARES money can go towards a, a salary of some sort, so if we need an extra aid, i- if the desire is to have another medical staff person, you know, working for the district, those are, those are directions that we can spend that money through the first round. Um, I've heard that there is a push to have some more educational funding in round two, um, but, but again, no dollar amount. I think there's some discussions between the House and the Senate as to how much that package should be and where should, it should go, but I, I do think they realize that the burden, I mean, that the burden is everywhere, it's not just on schools. Continue to look at areas that we need to address as a response to the viruses and, and do the best that we can and, and make those purchases.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I like the program, it's a good program, man, okay? Uh, other question, please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Duffus.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
I got, I got a question back up on the reopening of schools.
Yes.
There has been some communication that parents may try to get out of Mineral Point schools and go to a neighboring school. What's, what's the process, Mitch, right now? If a parent still chooses to move their kids out of Mineral Point, is it possible to open enroll yet?
That's been a, a topic of conversation at, at a lot of levels. Um, there is an alternative open enrollment opportunity. And, and on that application, you need to indicate why you are seeking the opportunity to open enroll. Um, and as administrators, we're all worried about it. We're all, you know, if Mineral Point decides we're not holding football and Dodge Hill is, we're all worried that all of our football players are gonna try to open enroll to Dodge Hill just so they can play football. I mean, those conversations are out there. Um, and the unfortunate thing is there's a, a pretty good price tag attached to students that we either bring in or lose when it comes to our enrollment numbers and, and state aid. So it, to sit, you know, that's probably a longer answer than it needed to be, but um, you know, simply to say, well, my school district's not gonna offer football is not an acceptable reason to open and roll. Um, but, but there are things that we certainly need to keep an eye on and, and quite honestly, while I'm not a fan of 100% virtual, I wanna offer that so that we don't lose parents saying, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna homeschool, you know? If we can offer the curriculum and offer the support through a virtual option, then we keep that student as, as a Mineral Point student, and when this someday disappears, that student's gonna walk back in our doors right where they need to be and still be a Mineral Point student.
If a parent has a question, Mitch, where, where should they direct it to?
Um, Elaine Schwartz is our, is our actual open enrollment expert, she handles all our open enrollment in and out forms, so I mean, that would be your best bet to, to try to get a quick answer right now would be from Elaine Schwartz.
Okay, thanks, Mitch.
Yep.
Um, and one other comment, um, it didn't really fall under discussion, but there was a local doctor that let us know that the hospital owns the subway building and they are willing to, um, as we've discussed, um, you know, And they are willing to, as we've discussed, you know, this is a community issue. It affects the entire community. You know, hope is that the community will rally together to help our students through this. In that, in that light, that the hospital is willing to donate that space if there are volunteers who would like to host 10 student gatherings for virtual days. And there, there may be others around, not necessarily our job to do. But I just want to make it known to the community members that are listening that, that, and the parents that are listening, that, that situations like that may arise where, where we're able to give, not we are able to give, our students, the community is able to give your students more resources.
So I feel like there's kind of a parking lot of items and those two items just fell on that. I also had some people reach out to me and ask about transportation, about busing and about how we're going to keep that safe. And I realize we're not that far along on this discussion yet. Another item for the parking lot of kind of things that we need to deal with. Also, somebody had asked me, could we do face shields instead of masks? So again, I put that out there as, we don't need to decide that tonight. And maybe that's not for this group, maybe that's for the administration to make a recommendation. But I want to, somebody brought it to me, I wanted to put it out there.
Thank you. Dr. Dunn?
I just want to add to the list of ideas to consider. You know, out of all the hundreds of great comments in the parent survey, I noticed that one comment was someone expressed willingness to be a volunteer tutor. And I don't know how the regulations around DPI, whether they allow any of that. But even just like if parents, especially working parents, you know, I, I know one parent emailed me and said, I'd have to hire a tutor, you know? But maybe if we solicited, you know, volunteer tutors that were, you know, background checked or some kind of brief screening process or something, or at least just posted those names for, for hire. And not, not as a school sanctioned employment, but just like, hey, you know, we're recruiting, you know, volunteer tutors to be on a list that we give out to parents and they can call them and vet them however they want. You know, that idea might be a good way to toss around, especially for, for kids who struggle a lot with the virtual format.
Something, something I can certainly hear.
Mitch, you muted.
That's because he didn't want the dog to.
Yeah, sorry, I'm dog sitting right now in, in my daughter's apartment. So, but yes, that's certainly, we've done things like that in the past where somebody's like, hey, I would be willing to help tutor math students. We've had Cummins employees who are looking for some time to, to volunteer that have done things like that as well. So I think, I think there's certainly ways we can reach out in the community and provide as much support as we can.
Any more discussion? All right, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Andrew, call a question, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. I swear in the last meeting, I had to get a, take, have a rule call for that.
That was the going process.
Oh, Jesus, I can't get it over with. I can't, can't remember. I'll send you a copy just in case you fall behind.